103, we will call this to order, please. No talking. There you go, chalkboard jungle, right, blackboard jungle. All right, it is the call to order for today's budget study session is 103. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Prustak.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, do we need to call the roll? I invite you to do so.
Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Prustak, here. Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boiles, running late. Gotcha.
Very well, and with that, we will open the floor to public communications. Do we have any, Madam Clerk?
Paul Lanyard.
Hello, Paul Lanyard, President of the Board of Park Vista. As you know, we have approximately $3.5 million worth of projects that have been identified in the city replacement reserves to be accomplished by 2031, $2.3 million in 2027. In the Park Vista, in the, sorry, the senior housing fund, there's approximately $900,000. Those are dollars that can be allocated, should be allocated to Park Vista. We have a $1.6 million approximate pipe replacement project that is underway. And I believe that Joe is recommending, the city's recommending, that $800,000 be moved over so that Park Vista can accomplish this project. So that's request one. Request two is, buried within your documents, is that the city takes $200,000 out of the general fund and move it over to the 504 fund moving forward in the future. With Joe's departure, we want to make sure that this is something that you are all cognizant of and will work with whoever attempts to replace him to move forward with in the future. So those are my two requests today. My second thing is, I just want to say to Joe, he's been an amazing partner with Park Vista over the years. We're very sad that he's leaving. He has been exceptional in working with us and talking about scenarios and how can we do, what can we do to ensure that Park Vista moves forward in a healthy manner? So, thank you to Joe, and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanyard.
Jim Bolgerides.
Hi, Jim Bolgerides. I want to start with something just a little different. First of all, I don't plan on making a habit of making your lives difficult or becoming a gadfly or anything. I think by and large, you guys and ladies do a fantastic job. I don't know if that gets recognized. That's why mostly, I'm just silent and I did my time and I think you guys, by and large, I think the city is exceptionally well-run. There's one thing that I've kind of been thinking about, and I want to give you just a little bit of a different perspective on the plunge rehab that you've got going. And I want to maybe throw a little bit of a red flag on a train that's got a lot of momentum right now and give you maybe a little cover to look at it a different way. And what I say may not be hugely popular with a lot of people, but, so I'm looking, I looked at the budget, I looked over and it says by 2024, '25, you're hoping to have $10.7 million in the plunge reserve project. And you want to rehab that and put a lot of money into it. And I just want to make sure you guys know what you have over there on the east side of town with the El Segundo Weisburn Pool. You guys have literally a world-class facility over there. I mean, it is the best pool between Pepperdine and Long Beach and maybe inland to commerce. I know, Councilmember Giroux, your family's in aquatics, so I know they're over there. What I want you to ask yourselves is what need is not being met now? Okay, the plunge has been closed about four years, give or take, right? Is there any aquatic need in this city that is not being met? And I don't think you can say yes. When I was swimming at the plunge, when they were both open, and it was only a short while they were both open, both pools, I was very often swimming, lap swimming over there in the plunge by myself, me and the lifeguard, okay? I was in the plunge today, you know, I do my, I do my 3,000 yards. This is supposed to be my nap time, by the way, so this is tough. It's tough for you guys too. I can see you're all fortified, you've all got your coffees, these are long, dry meetings. But my point is, you have more capacity in this city than you need. I have not had to wait for a lane, I have not had to share a lane in six months. I'm swimming by myself, there were 15 empty lanes, I counted them. You can go online and look. Let's ask what you can do for $10.7 million in this city. That's a lot of money. Now, I get it. I get the nostalgia and I get the, the deep heartfelt attachment. I started swimming in the plunge when I was eight years old. So it's not that I don't appreciate that building, okay? I do. But nostalgia is not a fiscal policy. And here's the thing that people don't understand. If you spend $10.7 million, and if that's the reserve, it'll be more. People think once you build a pool, you fill it up with water. And you don't. You fill it up with money, okay? And then you refill it every year. So I don't know what you're, I'm guessing, from back when I had to do it, operating budget is $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 a year if nothing breaks? And we've just seen even new pools break. So ask yourselves, do we need it? Things get to the end of their useful life. And this may be an unpopular minority opinion, but we don't need that pool. It's been empty four years. Nobody's not getting in the water that want to, just so you know. The other thing is, we couldn't staff that pool before. We had staffing nightmare issues. I remember we were having to cut hours, and when I say we, I mean as a user in both facilities, because you couldn't, you couldn't staff them with lifeguards. So I don't know, I don't know how you're going to deal with that. The other thing, just, just an anecdote nearby, Culver City also has the nice outdoor 50-yard, 50-meter pool, not as good as ours. They also had a beautiful indoor high school pool, beautiful. I swam there on opening day. That's a city with four times the population of ours? They had to tear it down. It just became too expensive, okay? If you want to save the facade, which is the historic part that everybody's attached to, do that. You can do that. But take a minute and let me try and give you a little cover to ask some hard questions so that it doesn't come from you guys, and then I'll stop and let you get going. But just ask yourselves, and you're trying to run a fiscally responsive, and I hear the term like a business, I want to know what need is not being met that we need to spend $12 million to meet? Because there is no shortage of aquatic possibilities in El Segundo now. Thank you for your time. I do, I do appreciate your guys' service, I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolgerides. Anyone further? Very well. I have a motion for, to read all ordinance and resolutions by agenda and title only. So moved.
Prustak second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No, all right. Motion passes. All right, staff presentations, we will now begin the budget study session. City Manager, who will present on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, our outgoing Finance Director will in two minutes. I just want to have a few opening remarks before turning it in, turning it over to Joe. The 2023-24 budget process actually started in late January, so obviously a lot has gone into what you have before you this afternoon. I want to thank the council for, for being available for this special budget study session. Want to thank all the department heads and their staffs for working through this, this lengthy process, as I said, since the end of January. And then, in particular, to Joe, his final budget here in El Segundo. He was kind enough to, to, to hold off on his new, new departure until we completed this budget process. So Joe, I want to personally thank you as the, not so new city manager now, but still almost a little over a year, so thank you for that. What you do have is a balanced budget, roughly on the general fund side, about an $88 million budget, both revenues and expenses, you'll see. We've been fortunate though to put back a number of things in this, in this forthcoming budget that I wanted to highlight just briefly, and then Joe will get into more details. You'll see items such as employee engagement. As you know, one of the tasks that I've been charged with is to work with the entire El Segundo staff on, on engaging them as staff and, and as a team and working together to, to continue to pursue the goals and objectives of the council. So you'll see some employee engagement items in the budget. We, we have put significant amount of dollars in our capital budget to the tune of almost $34 million in, in this coming year, which is a carryover from the previous year as well as upcoming. For a city our size, that's a pretty significant addition to the budget, but thankfully, a lot of exciting projects lie ahead in next fiscal year. We're bringing back our emergency management position and everything that goes with that within the fire department. We also put in a million dollars of kind of set aside money for the police department to deal with technology issues, employee issues that have come up at the recent council meetings in dealing with some of the new technological advances in policing. I'm happy to say too, that the, on the expense side, really the difference between last year and this year's budget is less than 1%. So we've, all departments have really held the line, I want to, for the most part, and I want to thank them for that. And then finally, this, the end of this fiscal year, or this calendar year, Measure BT, which was passed by the voters last November, will, will begin to, to kick off as we move forward. So those are just a few of the highlights. Joe will go into department by department items, and with that, Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Mr. Pimentel, city council members. So I do want to start off with, you know, staff has spent a significant amount of time and energy putting this budget together, so as the city manager mentioned, we began in late January, and there's been a series of numerous meetings between the Finance Department and all the other departments with the director and their budget development team, find, kind of fine-tuned things, and then we went and presented before the city manager with each of the departments along with finance. And then here we are today for our first budget study session for the 23-24 budget. And, you know, the proposed budget incorporates city council's strategic goals into the development of the proposed budget. And just to highlight what those goals are, so there's five goals. Number one is enhance customer service, diversity, equity, inclusion, and communication. Number two, support community safety and preparedness. Number three, promote quality workforce through teamwork, organizational efficiencies. Goal number four, develop and maintain quality infrastructure and technology. And goal number five, champion economic development and fiscal sustainability. So there's funds being used to accomplish each one of these goals, and we'll go through some of the details here. So I put this slide in there for those in the audience and at home that may not be familiar with some commonly used budget lingo. So this is just there, so anybody wants to refer back to that, they can. Okay, what I want to start off with first is an update, council, where we anticipate ending this year? So where we anticipate ending June 30, 2023? So I came before you in February to do a mid-year presentation, and there's been some adjustments since. So this is the revenue, so the original adopted budget was $81.7 million. At mid-year, we came before you, adjusting that upward to $83.9 million. Now, we're doing another adjustment, we're anticipating ending at $88.5 million. Mainly three categories here that are impacting this. One is the business license tax. One is the business license tax. We had assumed that there would be a slight decrease. We're actually coming in at $11.9 million right now as we speak, so that has been bumped back up to its original budget. Utility user tax. I'm sure we all know from our personal utility bills at home, that natural gas bills went through the roof. I know when I received mine in January, it was triple what it was the prior year. February's went down a little bit, but was still almost double what it was the prior year. And such is the same with businesses. Our utility user tax is 3% of the total utility bills for businesses, so we don't have a UUT for residents, only businesses. And both the natural gas and the CodeGen UUT came in much higher than we anticipated by $4.2 million. That's primarily due to Chevron, but it is all the businesses combined. Another line item there that significantly increased is the franchise tax. That's, we get a large payment once a year from SoCal Gas and then also Edison, so every April, and the bill, the check received from SoCal Gas was almost $2 million higher than what we anticipated. And that has to do with the higher natural gas prices, commodity prices. Now, this, we're not assuming that those high prices are going to stay in existence through next year. They will still, stay elevated, but not at the same level they are right now, and I'll get into that in a minute. And then, one thing I did want to point out is that Chevron Tax Resolution Agreement, the true-up payment, it shows a decrease. So I'm going to move on to the subs, the next slide here, and it gets into detail. So it's actually not a decrease. So the purpose of the slide is to help break down the various components of the Chevron Tax Resolution Agreement and identify the ultimate payment due to the city. So if we, we can begin with the far left. It does categorize the various revenue taxes that Chevron pays per the agreement. So starting with the gas, UUT, CodeGen, and all the way down to sales and use tax, and you have total taxes. So at the far left, 22, 23, they paid $8.7 million in total taxes. The TRA, which is what I highlighted in yellow at the bottom there, that's what they owe per the Tax Resolution Agreement, just a little over $14.5. So the difference in total taxes they paid, 8.7, and what the total per the agreement is that true-up payment, and that was, I'll go back a slide, and that's that $5.8 million that they paid. But in totality, again, they are paying $14.5 million. And if, we can look at that number that's highlighted in yellow, move all the way across, and you can see, they go, it has increased over the years. So 22, 23 is $14.5. And if we go all the way to the far right, under 2019, 2020, you can see that total payment to the city was $12.8 million. So it is increasing each year by the annual December CPI factor, and that's the factor that's highlighted in the square box. So I just wanted to point that out. Any questions on this? Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you explain the property tax decrease?
I'm sorry?
I'm just looking at the numbers from 21, 22 to 22, 23. Now, go down to the slide you were just on.
Yes.
If I'm, oh no, I'm sorry, yeah, it, it went from 1.6 last year to 1.3 this year.
Correct, so they, Chevron, that was called a Prop 8 Appeal, Assessment Appeal, and they were successful on having some of their assessed value reassessed at a lower rate, which, again, doesn't have any impact to us, because we're made whole per this tax resolution agreement.
Gotcha, just looking at all the numbers, that was the one that just kind of stood out for the, the decrease, that's all. Thank you.
And this just highlights exactly what I just went over. One thing I do want to point out is that last bullet point. The total payment that Chevron pays per the tax resolution agreement represents about 16% to 17% of our total general fund revenues. So now we're moving to the 23, 22, 23 general fund appropriations. So mid-year, I had anticipated an increase, going from $85.9 million, which was the original adopted budget, to $87.4 million, and that's where we anticipate ending this year. So no, no further adjustments from what I brought to you at mid-year. Okay, the 23-24 revenue assumptions for all funds. So we do have various funds, general fund, which is our largest, solid ways, capital improvement projects, so on. So total revenue is $163.5 million. Here's a breakdown of all the funds that exist within the city. So this slide depicts the city's proposed 23-24 revenues for all funds at $163.5 million, general fund being the largest, which represents 54% of total revenues, followed by the Enterprise Water Fund at 23% of total revenues. Any specific questions? I will get into details in subsequent slides. Okay, so starting with the general fund, the proposed 23-24 general fund revenues, the city's projected amount is $88.3 million. This is $6.5 million above last year's originally adopted revenue budget and $159,000 less than the estimated year-end revenue. So if we go to the bottom of the slide here, this is, we're comparing 22, 23 year-end estimates of $88.5 million to our projected 22, I'm sorry, 23, 24 of $88.3. So it's, it's almost a wash, and I'll just touch on some of the categories with significant variances. Line item number two, which is the business license tax. Measure BT, which passes past November, becomes effective with the January 24 renewal, business license renewals. Now, that, that tax measure was anticipated to bring in an extra $3 million. The city has been receiving written notifications per law from various businesses within El Segundo that they have been doing some tightening of the belt and doing some layoffs, so my numbers project those anticipated layoffs because part of our business license tax is based on headcount. So this does anticipate the amount of reduction in headcount that we will have citywide, but still an increase because of Measure BT. Item number four, property tax. Alls we're doing here is re-categorizing revenue that used to be in line item number 11, so if you go number 11, enter. So if you go number eleven, enter governmental revenue, that has decreased, and we just shifted it up there to the property tax. So it's just realigning that category. Line item number six, UUT. Natural gas prices, they did peak in December twenty-two, January twenty-three. So we are anticipating that those gas prices, however leveling off, are still gonna be much higher than what we were used to prior to December twenty-two. And then the total for UUT that we're anticipating for twenty-three, twenty-four, that ten point six million, that is significantly higher than what we have traditionally received in the past. We're anywhere from seven to seven and a half million. So it does anticipate the elevated prices of commodities, but not quite as high as where we were this year. And then line item number eight, the transfers in. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we received our last federal ARPA dollars, just under two million dollars. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, that we are no longer receiving those ARPA dollars. Any questions on the projected revenues?
Joe, on the UUT, the, the gas price is, is pretty speculative, right? I mean, that's a, that's a pretty soft number, depending on Ukraine pipelines and, and those pieces. If we have, we had a warm winter in Europe this year. We have a cold winter that could spike, but are we treating those as, as sort of one-off revenues, or are we baking inflation in and saying those are gonna stay high?
So we, we work with a third party to estimate those revenues. It's called Avenue Insights, and they do this across the US, but they specialize here in California with municipalities that have UUT. And they provide a pessimistic scenario, the, the most relevant scenario, and then an aggressive outlook. And I went with the middle of the road. And this is, is kind of in line where we're at right now. I, I think the prices have kind of leveled off.
I would just say, that number has sat at about six and a half million for years.
Right.
And, and the last two, we've had the spike.
Spike in both electricity. The Edison prices have, have continued to increase, and I don't know if you heard that they're anticipating shutting down the last nuclear power plant up in Northern California. That more than likely will have continued pressures on Edison to increase prices.
The Avila Beach? Because that got a life extension, a three-year, five-year life extension.
Yeah, there was a lawsuit that went before judicial court, and they're, I think, having pressure on the state to close that down. So that could have, you know, that could further have those pressures on Edison to increase prices. But we, to answer your, your question, we've seen increases in Edison over the last few years, and definitely in the natural gas prices. Thank you. And, and just, you know, what's going on in the political environment in Sacramento and possibly in Washington, there is a push to get away from natural gas usage and appliances. And that could have an impact, negative impact on prices as well. Any other questions on the revenues? So this pie chart represents the eighty-eight point three million in projected revenue, and it really depicts that we have a diverse tax base. Most cities will have at least fifty to sixty percent of their general fund revenues just in two categories, property tax and sales tax. That's the vast majority of cities. So we have a very, this depicts this, a very diverse tax base. So this graph depicts the top five general fund taxes. So we have pre-COVID, going back to eighteen, nineteen, and then you can see the dips, particularly in the blue line, which is TLT, and as well as the orange line, sales tax, those dips in, in the tax revenues during COVID, and then the recovery. And we're anticipating, I know, that these tax revenues are heading in a positive direction. I did want to bring this up, the Top Golf revenue estimates for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we do have the ground lease at one point three million. And per city council's policy that was adopted, seventy percent of that's supposed to be dedicated to annual pension contribution, and then thirty percent dedicated to repayment of the loan to the equipment replacement fund. There's an annual two-hundred-thousand-dollar community benefit contribution that's dedicated to Rec and Park Capital Improvement Projects. And then the recurring three percent beverage fee payment at the driving range and golf course with a minimum guarantee of two-hundred thousand. So we have not received that first payment yet. Per the agreement, they have one year after originally opening, and so after that one year anniversary, they have ninety days to remit that payment and reconciliation to the city. So that first payment is due by July fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three. And they have not given any, any indication yet of what that's coming in at.
So we have no idea how much that payment's gonna be?
Not yet.
We just know it's gonna be more than two-hundred thousand. The minimum is two-hundred thousand.
Minimum is two-hundred thousand.
Huh. Interesting.
Yeah, and I'll continue to, you know, to work with my counterpart over there at Top Golf and see if we can get some idea, but as of today, they, they have not provided anything. And then there's an annual twenty-thousand-dollar golf course ground lease payment. All right, this slide depicts the city's proposed twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four appropriations for all funds at one hundred and eighty-four point six million dollars. General fund is the largest at eighty-eight point two million. We're just under forty-eight percent of all appropriations, again, followed by the water fund. So very similar to the revenues, general fund and water fund make up bulk of the activity.
Does that wastewater, does that account for the overage that we detected from Hyperion? That we have collected more money than?
So this is the appropriations for next year, and it, it takes what we paid this year to Hyperion, we pay quarterly, and increases it, I, I believe it's by five percent. But that original estimated amount, which was significantly higher, yeah, that, that's not in here.
Okay.
And then the revenue, as, as far as the revenue that we've collected, that's sitting in the wastewater fund balance. I, I know council has asked a couple things. One, can we refund that, or can we reduce rates? I, I think there probably has to be a separate staff report brought to council on how to achieve that. I know there's, Mr. Hensley's office is gonna have to be involved, but there's gonna be certain legal parameters on how we can refund that or reduce rates. The twenty-three, twenty-four general fund appropriation, the proposed appropriations, eighty-eight point two million dollars, so aligns with the revenues for the general fund. And overall, this is less than a one percent increase from the year-end estimate for twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, there's some departments that have increases, some have decreases, but overall, pretty in line with where we ended in twenty-twenty-three. Some of the departments with large variations from the prior year. One is police department with four percent increase. This is due to contractual increase in the South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority dispatch center, so we, we contract out our dispatch center. And then some other contractual costs, like the Hawthorne Police, the Hawthorne Jail contract. There's an increase in our equipment replacement charges. So due to obviously the nature of buying new vehicles, those inflationary costs have increased, so there's some costs that have impacted the equipment replacement fund's costs as well. Number four, public works. That's double-digit increases in costs of utilities for the city. So just like everyone else, residents, businesses, the city's also experiencing higher costs in our utilities. This is for city buildings and infrastructure, an increase in materials and supplies for maintaining city-run pools, significant increases there. And other contractual service costs, so for instance, like maintenance of facilities, we had new contractor, and that also did have a large increase. Line number eleven, which is HR, there, there was a twenty-eight percent increase. This is due to recruitments, labor negotiations, professional development for employees. We have a hundred-thousand-dollar line item there for employee engagement, so that was there pre-COVID. That's something that council approved as initiative to meet one of their strategic goals, and that will be there for the city manager to pull from and have citywide events throughout the year or other promotional, um, events for, for employees. We also have funding of a new position that council approved during mid-year. So there's a brand-new FTE in that HR budget. Okay, any specific questions on the proposed appropriations? Okay, just some facts here, budget appropriation assumptions. So again, eighty-eight point two million. Fifty-three point nine, fifty-four million is personnel-related salary and benefits. Twenty-three point eight million is for operations and maintenance costs, a hundred and thirty thousand for capital outlaying, and then ten point three million for transfers out. That's primarily the pension obligation bond payment, nine point seven of that. And then public safety represents about forty-eight point seven percent at forty-two point nine million dollars. And then there's the breakdown between police and fire, and miscellaneous employees at twenty-four point nine million dollars. And maybe just one point, to point out here, public safety being fifty percent of the general fund, that, that's typical, could be anywhere from forty-five to about sixty percent of city's general funds. Okay, salaries and benefits, so we are assuming a five percent...
Joe, you said forty-five to sixty?
Six, some cities have, I've been in cities where it's sixty percent, yes. And that, that's, you know, we're, we're talking full-service cities. Budget appropriations, some assumptions. So salary and benefits, we did assume a five percent vacancy rate in, in this budget. That's approximately a two-point-two-million-dollar reduction in salaries and benefits, or it's equivalent to fourteen vacant full-time positions. So there's not frozen positions. Again, we're just assuming a five percent vacancy rate, which is what we did for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget as well. And then put that in perspective, on average, there's been about thirty vacancies at any given point in time, or about eleven percent vacancy rate. So a five percent vacancy rate is very realistic. Minimum wage did increase from fifteen dollars to fifteen fifty, January first, twenty-twenty-three. So of course, that has some pressures on the expenditure side. Overall, expenses for utilities, subscriptions, contracts, goods, maintenance dues, fees, consultants, those have all increased due to inflationary cost. So the twenty-three, twenty-four general fund transfers out, this is included in the proposed budget. We do have a half-million dollars earmarked to go out of general fund into equipment placement reserve or our ERP reserve. So we currently have approximately four hundred thousand dollars. This five hundred will bring it up to nine hundred thousand that we have in our ERP reserve. So our, our current ERP, Enterprise Resource Processing System, that's what we use for our billing, finance, HR, we use it for our utility billing, and we also use it for multiple accounts receivable billings. So that, end-of-life of that system is September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven, so we have about four years left. And it will no longer be supported. So we installed this back in the early two thousands. You know, so that's like equivalent, imagine using a cellphone from the early two thousands, just, it's outdated. The technology that we're using really is not serving the city or its constituents in, in, in a manner that I think it's expected. So this ERP replacement will definitely bring a great enhancement to the customer-user experience, bring much-needed business efficiencies within the city as well. And that is about a two-year process from start to finish. Transfer from the general fund to the solid waste fund, so we are still subsidizing our solid waste, our trash. Our subsidy is about three hundred thousand a year. So that will continue to increase each year until something is done to address that gap in those rates. Transfer from the general fund to the senior housing fund.
Joe, I thought, historically, the, the city had spent six hundred thousand dollars total on, on solid waste. And then when the new contract came into that code to adjust for the new Cal recycle rules, we thought that would go to one point six million for the first year of the contract. Residents would pay approximately a million, and we would pay six hundred thousand. And now it's, is it three hundred thousand? Is that reflecting? Did we overestimate back then? Or am I misremembering?
Um, you know, those, yeah, those, those specific dollars, they're not standing up at the percentage. So what the council decided to do is continue to subsidize twenty-five percent of the, of what the cost to the residents are. And that twenty-five percent, originally, that was about two hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars, and so that has risen to about three hundred thousand today. So the six hundred thousand delta you're talking about, I'm not sure, that could be inclusive of city-owned property. That, that piece of the contract, which we can't pass that on, that'd be, is coming out of the general fund. So transfer to the senior housing fund, Fund Five-O-Four. So as Mr. Lany mentioned on the public comments, we have about just under nine hundred thousand sitting there. We are earmark, proposing the earmarked act towards the plumbing project at Park Vista, so that will use all those funds up. And the, you know, ultimately, Park Vista is a city facility. It was built with general fund dollars, and ultimately, the general fund is financially responsible for any financial shortfalls, and this is where this two hundred thousand dollars will help, per year, will help subsidize the rents collected and the difference between the capital reserve that the senior housing board has and what is needed. And there was a study done back in twenty-eighteen by the city, Public Works Director Ken Berkman did the study, and identified about nine million dollars in capital repairs that Park Vista needs within the next twenty years. And so this two hundred thousand dollars will help with the delta between what is collected in rents and what is needed for this nine million dollars. Not included in the proposed budget is a transfer out to our pension trust. So we started the pension trust back in twenty-seventeen. There's just under five million dollars in there today. We have not funded it since twenty-nineteen. Calpers last year missed their mark, so their benchmark last year was six point eight, and they had a negative six point four return. This year, it's possible they might hit their six point eight, but looks like now they're gonna be slightly under. So it, I, my recommendation is to continue to put money in the pension trust, and when we do have a new pension liability down the road, we can address it and deal with it immediately rather than having it sit there and then having this interest accrue and then just ballooning into an amount that is hard to deal with down the road.
Joe, wasn't that fully, didn't we proclaim that fully funded two years ago?
We, we did. And as we speak today, we're a hundred and seven percent funded. This does not include last year's loss, so they're, they will be issuing a report in July. So they issue every July a report on their funding status from the prior year's return. So this July, when they issue that report, it'll have that negative six point four percent return, and we'll know we're going from a hundred and seven percent funded to whatever that amount is. Well, it could be that we go down to ninety-eight percent funded, so there, there would be a short, new unfunded, accrued liability that we can either, you know, use the pension trust to deal with, or, you know, amortize it over X amount of years.
But we are not, we don't have the, an allocation included in this budget, but you would recommend we include one? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And then even if we don't use it for a, a, a new pension liability, we can use it. We do, every payroll, we... We do, every payroll, we have what's called normal cost, pension cost that we pay to Calpers, and that's about four and a half million a year. So we can always withdraw those funds to pay for that. So it's not like, you know, we would tuck it away in this pension trust and it can only be used for unfunded liabilities. We can also use it for the, every payroll cost that we send to Pers, if, you know, if that's what was needed. Okay, getting into some of the departmental requests or discussions. And if I don't cover everything that the department head would like to talk about, I would encourage them to come up here and let me know, you know, if you want to talk to council on your particular department. So the first one is the city manager's office and city council budget. So city managers comprised of the city manager's office, communications department, El Segundo Media, and the economic development department. It includes a proposed state and federal lobbyist at forty thousand dollars, that is a new line item built into the budget. It also includes forty-five thousand dollars in prior Chevron donations, in the Economic Development Trust, to be utilized for special event champions of business. So that's what the anticipation is. And I recently heard that Chevron is anticipating on providing the city with a new donation for those continued economic development promotions. And also a management analyst position reprogrammed to a special projects coordinator. So that's also in the budget.
Excuse me, Joe. The line item on the proposed state and federal lobbyist, where does that come from?
Actually, that will be on tomorrow night's agenda. So I just put it in here just in case, it should have said proposed.
It does say proposed.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, okay, I didn't know, but it was coming from your office.
Yes, that'll be on the agenda of tomorrow night's meeting.
And city council, okay.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so all the asks in here came from the departments, and then we worked, they worked with finance and city manager's office to include it. Okay, the next department.
Actually, I just want to say, you know, after a lot of conversations I had with Daryl, or the city manager, you know, I was really pushing for that special projects person. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's really as a result of us really wanting to ensure that our projects, especially our capital improvement projects, are being, have a, being proactively managed to try to shorten the timeframe. Not that our current staff isn't able to do it, it's just that they are so large and there's so many of them. We want to ensure that we are getting them done as quickly as possible and as cost-effectively as possible. So that's a result of that conversation, and I just want to make sure everyone understands that's, that move is to really just, we have a lot of big projects. We have the plunge, we have the teen center, we have the rec park itself, we have, what else do we have?
There's a number of projects. You saw just like thirty-three million dollars in capital projects.
Right, so that's really, that's what that headcount is.
Okay, IT. So ISD budget now includes ongoing technology charges and cost citywide. So we started this effort last year trying to capture all the technology. There was further pieces of software and technology that were identified that were still on individual departments' budgets, so we included that. We believe we've captured pretty much all software renewals, maintenance, technology requests in the IT budget now. Also, IT recently aligned department roles and responsibilities through a midyear department reorganization, and that's included in this budget as well.
So Joe, I just have one question. So you're saying that last year's budget, because it's only a hundred thousand dollar delta, approximately a hundred and something change delta on last year versus this proposed? So that captured, last year also captured all the activity, IT activity, so we're not...
Yeah, that hundred thousand is not, that's just the net. So there, there were several individuals that previously worked for the city in IT that have left to move on. Those individuals are being replaced with Pepper members. So salary and benefit costs have decreased. And then, you know, the delta's a little bit larger than that hundred thousand for the increase in software.
And then in that, because I know we're in the process of doing the building and planning system, and then we are looking at doing a complete ERP, right? System is, have, is that budget, proposed budget encapsulate that as well? And the project manager, that would be, we would need to do that because that's a huge undertaking, and we would need to bring in project management staff to help us accomplish that. And I just want to make sure that is sufficient funding for that huge project.
Yes, so some of that, which you referred to, some of those costs will be actually charged to project itself. But yes, when Director Calderon developed the budget, he kept the professional services, contractual services at an elevated level, even though anticipating that will have vacancies, vacant positions filled. So keeping those professional services at a higher request to help out with all these projects that are ongoing.
Because I just want to make sure that, you know, there's no delay in instituting these projects and that we move, you know, some of the, some of the issues that we've had historically is that we haven't had the resources to help us expedite the process. So I want to make sure that that resource is there and so that we can get some of these bigger projects. And I know one of the other things the mayor had brought up about looking at technology for our safety, for both police and fire, and I want to make sure that we have put money in there to also, you know, accomplish those, those projects as well.
Yes, so when we get to the police budget, you'll see there's a line item that discusses what you're referring to for the, for the police department. You know, the only comment I'll have is some of the larger projects, for instance, let's use the ERP, that does take about two years to fully implement from start to finish, and it's almost a phasing approach. You're turning on pieces of the module at a time. Okay, so some of the IT initiatives are listed here. I'm not going to go through all of them, but these are definitely key things. And that top one, research and plan replacement of the enterprise resources, planning system in conjunction with finance department, so that's, obviously, that's a huge project. And as I mentioned, we have four hundred thousand already in there, we're asking for another five hundred thousand, but this is probably going to be two and a half, maybe up to three and a half million dollar project for a new ERP system. Yeah, maybe another one that mentioned is number three, present a demo on open data Number six, the key one, to upgrade network infrastructure and cybersecurity systems, that's something that's key to make sure that we're on top of.
Joe, didn't we just do a record retention policy? We just approved the timelines on them at a meeting six weeks ago. So is there something new, is that a new initiative? And a couple of years ago, we had the email retention policy go in, which I thought was digital records, because we lost emails after two years or something.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor Proten. We discussed this a few weeks ago about the retention policy, about the email.
You just called retention policy. But you mean you're specifically saying email?
Correct, and that's one that apparently it's been, okay, then it should say emails, that's an error on my part. So, but that's one that I believe that the previous IT director was working on with the
I see, that's why it's here again. Ah, very well.
Last little piece.
So to be clear, we discussed our overall record retention policy. This program is specifically about emails?
Correct, just specific emails.
So I'll make sure everyone's on the same page, thanks.
Okay, next one is human resources. So budget increase to provide core HR services. So some of these services are classes, class and comp studies, that's something that has not been done in a long time, that needs, needs to be done. Employee engagement initiative, already mentioned that, a hundred thousand dollars. City manager will oversee how that's utilized. Implementing additional staff approved at midyear, so that's the new analyst, HR analyst. And then some items reflective of specific current needs are employee investigations, executive recruitment, testing, and recruitment for public safety, and then training and coaching for staff.
And just for clarification, the class series and class and studies really encapsulate also the management development courses, because one of the things we'd recognized is that we need to ensure that we're developing a bench within our core departments, a bench of, you know, worker for succession planning. So that's one area that we had recognized as being a little anemic. So one of the things that we have asked the HR department to do is to continue to offer classes in management training for, for personnel to, to be promoted forward.
Yeah, Director Reddick has done a wonderful job, that there's been numerous classes over the last several months that staff has been attending. I know there's a lot more coming up in the pipeline. But yes, so that bottom bullet, on the very bottom, their training and coaching, that's inclusive in that category. Good afternoon, Mayor. Okay, finance and treasury. So first bullet point, the half million dollars, which I already mentioned for the ERP system. Continued implementation of new GASB requirements. So the Government Accounting Standards Board continues to issue new accounting guidelines for government to report their financials more and more like the private sector, so there's new pronouncements coming out that will be effective for next year that we'll have to implement. Recruitment of a new CFO, implementation of Measure BT, so that's in here. And then Measure T, I just wanted to put that in there, even though it's not for twenty-three, twenty-four, it is coming up. That's where it was a change from an elected treasurer to an appointed treasurer. Measure T went before, on the ballot, I believe it was in March of 2020, and that was passed.
Joe, at the time, that we speculated that that role would be combined with the CFO, do we anticipate that being a separate post now, or do we still anticipate it being combined role?
You know, a lot of cities, that's what they do, they combine that role with the CFO. So for instance, you know, I've managed the portfolios at numerous agencies, I've been at, of course, you have the staff that's doing all the labor work on. But Dino Marsochi and his staff, you know, they're doing the day-to-day, and then Matt, you know, oversees the overall direction and gives guidance. And so that's what, whether it's the CFO or whomever, it is, they provide guidance to Dino and his staff.
I only ask because that would probably be a significantly well-compensated position. So if we're combining the two, that saves us a significant amount of money in 2024.
You know, as far as the compensation, that would probably be more of an HR-related question, but it typically is combined with, with the CFO role.
And then I just have one question too, Joe. So for the implementation of the Measure BT, what we did in that measure is try to streamline some operations. So hopefully, once it's implemented, the, the application to import and to gather the taxes will be streamlined going forward, right?
Yes, so Dino actually reached out to the software firm that we use when Measure BT passed and started working with them then, on, you know, can you program this in your system, is it capable? They're all ready to go. So it's all, you know, we have it ready to roll.
Because it's just unfortunate that we have to do the timing work, because we're doing this at the same time we're looking at an ERP system. So it's good that we don't have to create a lot of changes in our current system that we're going to be scrapping in the year after that.
Okay, the next department, recreation parks and library. So the budget, proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, services returning to pre-pandemic status. Of course, inflationary increases, particularly since a lot of those positions in rec park and library are part-time and minimum wage increase, that does have an impact there. And restoring items previously deferred. And some of those are deferred maintenance for facilities, replacement of park trashcans, that is in the budget. Downtown of hanging baskets, so that's in the budget. New decorative lighting in downtown, includes Candy Cane Lane event security. So we, last year was the first year that, you know, the city really picked up a lot of costs for Candy Cane Lane. There were some components of that in the budget, but definitely not enough to cover the total cost. Now we're capturing what the costs truly are. Added laser grading of the athletic fields, this service is needed annually until the fields are redone. Increase the farmer's market to help reinvigorate the program, increase the teen center activities, and then increase to minor ongoing repairs and maintenance at Wiseburn Aquatic Center.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Any more detail on the teen center activities, given that that facility might change? Or the, also the farmer's market? What are we doing exactly to reinvigorate that ongoing event?
Sure, I'd ask Director Mancini to come up and speak to that.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. So I think your first question was about the teen center. So during the pandemic, we dropped those, the programs down significantly, and so the budget dropped as well. And so we're, we're trying to get back to pre-pandemic times, increasing programming. I think that's been a discussion we've had here at the dais, is just really getting more activities and things for the kids to do. You recently allocated ten thousand dollars for us to get some new furniture and equipment, so I think that's all part of that plan. Of course, as we undertake this renovation of the teen center, perhaps we would come back at some point and need additional funding, but this should get us through at least the next year or so. And then as far as the farmer's markets, we're really trying to bring out activities that will get the community to just want to come out every week, and, and either it's live music or activities for kids and things like that, but that's something that the commission had asked us to take a look at, bringing in new vendors and then also a bunch of activities.
On that last one, have we ever studied the cost-benefit on the farmer's market?
Not since I have been here.
I just, I asked because I know considerable labor goes into it across multiple departments, the bollards alone pulling those out, I see people do that. And it feels like it's been dwindling over the years, and I'm just wondering what benefit, if it makes sense to continue.
Right, I mean, I think that's something we should probably look at, given that we're going to try and bring these kind of activities back this year and see if we can get some of that excitement going again, but perhaps it's something we really look at during this year and really figure out.
Sorry, I second the mayor's on that, because in the end, if you don't get the vendors to come in and do what, if they're not seeing it as an advantageous business proposition, then us putting up more kiddie rides is not going to help out the overall business plan.
Right.
So I think in general, we need to figure out either A, why they're not coming, or why they're not making any money when they're here.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Because in the end, I'm pretty sure we're upside down on this.
We are. Yeah.
So to throw more money, good money after bad, doesn't make a lot of sense, in my opinion.
We can look at that. I know one of the issues that the vendors, or that we have in getting vendors, is that it's on a weeknight, and a lot of people that do this as their side business, they're not available in the evenings. So most of the vendors that we go out and try and recruit say, you know, I can really only do it if it's on a weekend. So I know that's one of our challenges, but that's something we're going to keep looking at this year.
Okay, continuing with rec parks and library, two big projects. Two big projects that are in here, the plunge in the rec park Phase 1. So for the plunge, construction to begin in 2324. The current amount in the plunge reserve is $4.7 million. We're proposing an additional $2.5 million for the current budget. And then $2.5 million in 2425. Plus, there's a million dollars pending from Chargers Mart Ventures. And that would bring the total available to $10.7 million. A significant amount to have in reserve for the plunge.
I'm not sure if now is the time to talk through that, but I do think that at some point in time, I know with ESAC, there was obviously a delta between what we had to spend and what it actually costed, and it was raised independently. Are we, probably should be considering, what is the cap that we're willing to go to from a general fund perspective? Because that 10.7 is a big number, and it's going to go up. It's going to be 12, 13 by that time. So do we start the other piece of that to fill that delta now? How do we go about that? Because I do think to be, that we need to kind of set a cap on what we're comfortable with that would come out of the general fund, and 10.7 is a big number. Is that discussion now, or is that to be agendized? How does that work out? Because I know you're going, I guess for the budget for this year, it doesn't matter. You're just going with the 2.5. Okay.
Joe, is that 2.5 inclusive of what we already were accruing? Because we already had CIP money allocated to this, I think $800,000 a year going forward. So is that inclusive of that?
So kind of at the top there, it says current designated reserve. That 4.7 million is what we have today.
I know, we had programmed money for 23, 24, 25 previously earmarked for this. So is that money in the 2.5 for 2023, 24, 24, 25?
Yes, and that we increased it to 2.5.
Okay, so yeah, so it's not 3.3, it's 2.5 total.
Correct. Correct. And then the 4.7 also includes a half million from Chevron and 2 million from the Chargers.
Is it a million from the Chargers, or is it 2 million? And what is it pending on? Is it the completion of their facility when they have the obligation to make that payment?
So they already made two payments of $1 million each. So we have 2 million, that's included in the 4.7 million that we have in the bank today. And then there is an additional $1 million. You know, I don't know when the trigger point is, but I know it is anticipated to come in in 2324. Okay. And then we have plunge reserves, again, 10.7 million by 2425. So the next discussion is rec park Phase 1. So currently, we have 1.7 million in the bank today for rec park Phase 1. We're recommending $3 million for 2324. Again, that would be a transfer out from the general fund reserves into the CIP reserve. And then an additional $2 million each year for 2425 and 2526, bringing the total reserve for rec park Phase 1 to $8.7 million.
Do we know the price tag for all of Phase 1? Or have an estimate of what that's going to take?
I believe it was estimated right around 8.5, 8.7 runoff.
Yeah, it was estimated around 8. No, another item on tomorrow night's agenda will be the contract with LPA Design Firm, who we're retaining to help us design the entire Phase 1 project. So part of their scope of work will be to help us zero in on, more specifically, how much we can anticipate that Phase 1 cost to be.
Okay, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, so police department budget is next. Overall, there was very few changes. Administrative charges did decrease despite inflation due to some cost comparisons. So they've been very, thrifty, I guess is the best word, at negotiating with their vendors, and that saved the city quite a bit of money. There is a half million dollar charge included in the PD department to recoup liability insurance claims. And that was at council's direction. We've been doing this, this is the third year that we're doing this now. Increase to personnel background charges resulting from a hiring push. And then a $1 million reserve for short-term additional staffing needs and anticipated technology upgrades for policing from public safety development impact fees and special revenue funds, so non-general fund sources. And this was from the recommendation from the Public Safety Task Force. So this is not in the general fund budget. If council approves this, that would be included in the special revenue funds, like development impact fees and other special police revenue funds.
Okay, so there'll be another discussion about this million dollars. We're not necessarily deciding, you're earmarking this because of a proposal that we haven't seen yet.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, police department continued. So as of April, the department has 58 of the 62 authorized sworn personnel. I know that's always changing. So I don't know if that's accurate as of what we're speaking right now, but it's going to be pretty close. Previous fiscal year's budget included frozen and vacant positions, which again, there are no more frozen positions. And we are applying that 5% vacancy rate to the PD as well. Overtime numbers increase when trainings increased or crime spikes. But one thing I did want to point out here, that last bullet point, OT was historically about 1.3 million per year prior to COVID. And after COVID, has been running about 1 million a year. And then police department continued. So some of the annual support that police provides is outside of, you know, the police department. It's El Segundo Unified School District, two resource officers. City of El Segundo special events, which have increased post-pandemic. Private business, security, and patrol. And some of that is Top Golf, Chevron, Lakers, filming. We do bill each of these entities for the fully burdened rate, which will recoup all the costs, both the hard and soft costs.
So just for clarification, the resource officers are not just for El Segundo Unified, they're also for the Wiseburn District as well as Vista Mar. So I just want to make sure, we should edit that so it's clear that those two resource officers are actually covering the four El Segundo Unified School Districts, the Wiseburn High School and the Da Vinci High School and the Vista Mar High School. And then the other thing, I know we talked about securing, including, or putting some of the the staffing for special events to take it from the Arts and Culture Fund. You know, with some of the, some of the new events that the Arts and Culture Fund, the project and culture committee proposed, require staff time. So we were saying that we should be looking at capturing some of that money from the fund to cover some of these increased overtimes.
I guess it would depend on the event. So a lot of these events.
I know, you didn't list, you didn't list the other ones, like the festival holidays. And, but we just need to make sure that we are fully burdening those festivals through the arts and culture, that we're capturing that as well.
Yeah, I know the arts and culture budget will be coming before you, the first meeting in May. So that would be May 2nd, you'll see that budget. And that's, we can include discussion of that.
Right, just want to make sure, you know, like the other one is the art walk that takes up a lot of, you know, we have street closures, there's a lot of work behind the scenes that the city has to provide. That money, if they're going to, if that's under the arts and culture budget, then that, those fees should really be accounted for, for both our public safety as well as our public works. Because street closures and manning the streets, from the police perspective, we need to really, when we look at these festivals, we need to look at them holistically and see the complete costs, not just, you know, the short-term, the, you know, like the tents and the van. We need to look at the full cost.
So on any events, we bill the applicant. Now, some of these events, though, council has chosen to subsidize. And that's where the cost comes back to us.
I just want to make sure we're, we all are aware of the ones we're actually subsidizing, and it's clear, and that everything is really spelled out, especially on the P&Ls. After, you know, for, one of the things that we talked to the Arts and Culture Committee was that we really need to see, we really need to see detailed P&Ls for each of these events that we're putting on, so that we can make an assessment if it's, if they're worthwhile to move forward with.
Okay, another part of the police department budget is the South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority Dispatch Center. So that contract has significantly increased over the last several years.
Hey Joe, any idea what, when we did dispatch internally? I don't even remember when that was, but what the cost was for us as an internal department?
You know, I was, so when I came on in 2016, we didn't have the dispatch. So I don't know if Chief Bermuda's or anybody from.
I know when we approved the new pricing a couple of years ago for the dispatch, that's admittedly just, you know, eye-wateringly expensive. At the time, that staff report, they laid out the previous dispatch and the loss maker it was. So it still made more sense to do this. But it's, I mean, this is just excruciating. It's crazy. Okay, Chief, yeah?
Yeah, I was telling Joe, I don't remember the cost, but I was involved with the transition from going from our internal dispatch center to going RCC. And I can tell you, it was, it was a big undertaking. But it's so much more than just the expense. It's also the staffing, the management of it, and the ongoing maintenance. And so that very quickly can spiral.
Thanks, and generally, you're happy with it? I know there is a couple of snafus, but I don't think that's related to dispatch. That's related to cell tower information?
Yeah, I'm happy with RCC.
Okay, thank you. And this continues to escalate, though. We're going to see, this balloons up through 2025, I think, the pricing on this before it levels out.
I don't know exactly when it, what the structure is, but I can tell you there's very few options for police dispatching. So it would either require us to reopen our own dispatch center or trying to get a couple of cities to join with us.
Yeah, I think this is our actively recruit, you know, unincorporated areas to join.
Yeah, it's going to be tough. Yes. Thank you.
One of the positives too about having an outside contract, you don't have the liabilities that come with in-house staff. So that's also a plus. Okay, the fire department. So the fire department is comprised of administration, fire prevention, Coupa, suppression, paramedic, and emergency management. And the city manager mentioned we are bringing back the emergency management budget. So that was frozen for 2223. Fire prevention division will be staffed with five FTEs. Let's see, historically, ongoing vacancies have incurred overtime costs to backfill staff. So that's something that I know council has talked about in the past as well, is the overtime costs and the constant staffing model. Fire department continued. So urban search and rescue, the USAR costs increased due to previous grant funding that has ended. Implementation of new software for reporting requirements also, that has increased and will overlap with last year of the reporting software.
So I have one question. It says fire prevention division to be staffed with five FTEs. What is the current FTE count now?
I don't know. You guys have any answer to that?
Currently, we have four, and we were going to propose that plan check position.
And then a lot of times, those FTEs actually bring in revenue, correct?
That's correct. We were going to talk about that on the next slide. Did we want to go, and we want to move on to that?
All right, so actually, Nicole's going to talk about cost recovery programs with the fire department.
So for 2223, this was the first year we were actually able to fully cost recover for fire prevention. As of now, we have collected $194,000 and some change for plan checks, $128,000 and some change for new construction. And then for our annuals, we build for $68,000, but we've only recovered about 17. But that's just because our billing was delayed. So we do plan and hope to recover most of that. And for after-hours inspections, we've recovered $25,000. So as of right now, we have recovered about $417,000. And our budget for 2223 was 400, is $463,200 and $206,000. So we are projected to recover that completely. In addition to, we just were awarded a FEMA grant for $423,000, which we will be coming to council with here, hopefully, next month. And I believe that's it. And so we did, as you recall, we've come back with the Dennis Grob contract several times. And we have budgeted for, I believe, $150,000, which as a plan checks, we've recovered over $194,000. So this more than pays for a full-time position. So that would be the hope to eliminate that and have that plan checker. If it does slow down, to go out and do inspections as well, so we can keep our inspections going and recovering.
And one of the things on the, with the additional FTE, will you be able to do more proactive outreach about earthquake preparedness? And, you know, for the residents as well as businesses? Can we, because I know one of the things we had, I brought up before, is that during COVID, we kind of put earthquakes out of our mindset because we're focused on COVID. And now I think we really need to get back into the focus of being prepared for a major earthquake. And I just, and because we haven't had one a long time. So that will be encompassed in that, the responsibilities of those five FTEs, correct?
Yes, that, especially for me in my role, it helps free me up a little bit to start being able to do a lot of more of that education component that has been lacking, absolutely.
Are we still contracting fire prevention? Because I know we had that backlog, so we have a contractor trying to fill the backlog of inspections.
The inspector, no, we only had him for about two or three months.
Okay.
And we just hired Albert, he's back there. He's our new inspector, so.
And do we still have the significant backlog? That was due to be, I think we were forecasting that through December this year, is that right?
Yes, we have backlog about three weeks. Now that Albert just started, we do hope to get that moving and hopefully get him up to speed here and at least have, probably hopefully, no more than 10 days turnaround for inspections.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't want to blabber too much, but is this affecting Mr. Allen, your department, or no? Okay, good, okay, so thank you.
Okay, and then, you know, just to reiterate, those new cost recovery fees that FIRE has implemented last year, they are paying off on recouping the cost of these programs.
Well, and just for the public, it's not only that it's recouping those, recovering the cost, it's making our city safer.
Yes.
Right, so it's a win-win. Our city is now safer, our buildings are up to code.
Absolutely. City clerk's budget. So there is no election activity for 2324. A minimal amount of budget is set aside for training and meetings related to elections. And training completed in fiscal year 2223 results in decrease in the training and education overall. City attorney's budget, so we do have about a 10% increase in services due to pending and potential. and potential new investigations, claims, and lawsuits. And hopefully, that should taper off in the subsequent years. Community Development Department. So cost savings from increase to in-house services such as building division plan checks, planning division entitlements performed by staff. So they're one of the departments that did have a decrease compared to the 2223 budget. Temporary staff service for digitizing planning files, so that's an ongoing effort. Neighborhood preservation requests for 50,000 for noise, vibration, and environmental analysis. Any questions there?
Was that last one hyperion? The perimeter or no?
I do not believe so, but I believe Director Allen can address that.
Hyperion is, is a factor in the last one. The 50,000 is a rough number. We don't know what might come up, such as the hyperion work that was done on the back service road. So that was a time where we had to make a call, get somebody out here to do some noise and vibration analysis. If something like that were to happen again, rather than searching for funds and coming back and asking for funds at that time, this just gives us some sort of allocation that we can pull from. But it's hyperion, it's a lot of construction projects that are throughout the community. It could be any of those things.
How about the, I know we talked about the short-term rental and getting additional staffing to help manage that program? Because that's supposed to be coming to us again for, because right now, it's, we've extended the pilot program. So where, is that embedded in here?
So in the last fiscal year, council authorized additional neighborhood preservation or code compliance inspectors. So we're, we're in the recruitment process for that, but that would help ramp up enforcement. We, we don't need to come back unless we saw another need for additional staffing there.
Because currently, because I know one of the things that we saw when we looking at the data, was that there was a major, there was very few people that actually had pulled permits. But there was a lot of activity that were operating, I guess, illegally. So have, have we seen a transition to getting people up and registering their businesses? Or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the numbers offhand, but I do know, it's, it's more about our relationship and how we manage our relationship with a vendor or platform like Airbnb. And so through Airbnb, we're able to work with them on the backend and audit listed, listed sites or, or houses or locations, and turn off those listings if they do not have the appropriate city licenses. So we, we've been successful in that. I don't know the number offhand. The next step would be pursuing a similar relationship with VBRO or any of the other popular platforms.
And then, and one of the things we could, if you, we could add is a community outreach to do a communication out to the public to make sure that people understand what our current laws are. And, because I think it's been a while since we've actually been, we've put out publicly what our stance is and what the requirement is of the, of the residents to do it. So I think some of the problem is, is that people don't know. So if we could maybe institute an annual communication.
Sure.
About our BBR, our, our home sharing program.
Noted.
This question might be for Daryl. I, kind of piggybacking on that, I know, I think it was probably back in October or November, we discussed appropriating funds to hire more code enforcement people into the city. And is it that difficult to find that? Or are we just not prioritizing it yet?
Well, we, we've had several recruitments in, in the works. Particularly in my department, we've had to backfill at least half a dozen positions, not inclusive of the new positions with neighborhood preservation. And so it's, it's a matter of staffing up where we need immediate assistance, like a plan checker or building inspector. Those things are, are an immediate need, because if we don't have those people, we start to lag behind and we get a backlog of workload. So we've been keeping up with those things. The recruitment for a code compliance inspector is in the works, whether it be part-time or full-time. We're looking at both of those options, because we're looking at trying to tackle nighttime and weekend coverage as, as well.
I understand. If I remember the, if I remember correctly, the conversation we had up here was that we, we wanted to make sure that was prioritized. So just in the, in the process, I don't think it's a matter of allocation of, of funds. I think we've already done that.
Yes, we, well, and the interesting thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, when Michael mentions neighborhood preservation, that is code compliance. I think it was just, it's just a new, new name, new twist on the.
Same service, different name.
Yes, same responsibility, just a new name.
It's a kinder, gentler way of saying it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So Community Development continued. So every year, we get the CDBG grant. So we're also anticipating that again in '24. Library Park ADA Improvement Project is included with that grant. Residential Sound Isolation Program, so budget for two appraisals for the sale of the RSI house. That's in the budget. Certified Access Specialist Program, CAS program, pass-through surcharge to the state, city's collected portion to be used for training. And AHAD $800,000 transfer out for Park Vista Plumbing Project.
Is that, is that that big one we've been talking about for years?
Yes.
Park Vista?
Yep.
That's great. So that'll complete it in its entirety? The plumbing issues, or?
This will, this will fund it.
Not to replace the plumbing, but fix the issue that we know. Okay, thank you.
It'll certainly go a long way towards getting there, but I think the number's a little bigger. Yeah, the actual, the total number.
It's a 1.7.
Yeah.
For the.
Right. So 800,000.
It's just close to that delta.
It's 800,000 from us, and then the remainder comes from the senior Citizens Housing Corp. account. So they, they have their own funds. Okay, Public Works, Government Buildings has increased. So of course, I've already talked about this utility increases, increases related to the Wiseburn Aquatic Center, chemical costs for Wiseburn Aquatic Center. So that's something that I'm seeing with all my colleagues as well. It's the cost of pool utilities and chemicals have gone through the roof. Increase in sandbags due to rain, so the heavy rains that we had over the winter. And then there was a new custodial contract, which had some increases associated with that. Engineering contractual services needed due to staff vacancies. And then some contract services are reimbursed, or semi-reimbursed through private businesses.
Sorry, Joe. I know that one of the things, and maybe it's, it was about some of the equipment in our Public Works Departments needed to be replaced.
Yes. Yes, so that's on this slide, the very bottom bullet.
Okay.
Street services, so street sweeping contract costs have increased, and that comes out of Public Works. So engineering contractual services needed due to staff vacancies as well. Traffic safety, utility costs have increased. Equipment maintenance, I think this is where you're talking about, the purchase of new equipment and vehicles, so that's in there. And I believe tomorrow night, there's an item for a new dump, dump truck?
Yes, correct.
And then, of course, gas prices have been elevated, and cost of parts for our city vehicles, those have significantly increased as well. So solid waste, we have the SB 1383 enforcement. Elias, is that related to the food waste?
Yes.
So that's the, the food waste requirement that the state has mandated. Edco contract price increases due to CPI and the new organics recycling requirement, that's the 1383. And then, and again, just to remind council that we are still subsidizing solid waste, tune about 300,000 a year from the general fund.
And then, Joe, is there no technology, like new technology that we could be looking at in this area that, to help streamline or make things more efficient? Like, have we looked at this area for, because I know we have a technology both in police, fire, and the ERP system. I just want to make sure we're not forgetting about the Public Works Department from a technology standpoint.
Um, nothing that comes to mind right now. I don't know if, Elias, if you have any thing as far as technology?
We, we're thinking of maybe installing some cameras in, in some parts of town where we continuously are, are getting a lot of trash that are dumped. But it'll be, it'll be difficult, it'll be a long shot. And also, I do know that CalRecycle is looking at technology, believe it or not, to install cameras on, on the, on the trash collector trucks to detect if, if people are recycling. But that'd be difficult to, to, to really see, because a lot of people put their trash in a bag, and you won't be able to see what is inside. But that's something that is being contemplated by the state. I just, I'm sharing this with you. Whether they're gonna implement it or it works, is, is remain to be seen.
Elias, when 1383 was passed, there was a funding component that was supposed to come from the state for that. But I, I think it's been written out of the governor's new budget. But is there any hope of recovering that? Or, or am I attaching it to the wrong bill?
Yes. Once 1383 passed by the state, they offered some grants, and we were the first, one of the very first municipalities that we applied. And we got about $24,000 grant that helped us. But frankly, beyond and above that, there hasn't been any more money that CalRecycle has helped us or any other municipality. Our other municipality colleagues are, are in the same boat as, as we are. So there's a, there's a lot of costs associated with follow-through to make sure SB 1383 is complied with. And, and that is gonna be, be expensive. But we, we are talking to them constantly, but we haven't had any, any other grants that have become available to us.
Thank you. I know the League of Cities is, is active in trying to get a, a funding stream for that, but I think most people are pretty pessimistic. Thank you.
But one thing I'd like to add, though, we have increased the fee to our haulers, commercial haulers. So the additional cost is, in a way, is being compensated for, by the fact that we are issuing permits to those commercial haulers, if that makes sense.
Okay, so just kind of, to reiterate some of the new budget requests that are in the 20, proposed 2224 budget. A new ERP system, again, end of life is June 27, so that's a half a million dollars for that. Unfreeze the Emergency Management Coordinator position and operational budget, that's equivalent to about 353,000. The ELC Center refurbishing that. So we are anticipated to receive a grant of, I think, just under 330,000. It does require a $100,000 general fund contribution. Employee Engagement Initiative, $100,000. Transfer of $200,000 to the Senior Housing Fund to put into their capital reserve. And again, to meet that $9 million in projects that need to be done over the next 20 years. Fund the pension trust, $500,000 for 2324. And so total new requests are just under 1.8 million in the general fund, and about 330,000 from the federal grants.
Joe, on the ERP, how confident are you? Is that implementation cost, consultants, internal costs related to additional hours, et cetera, all-in number?
So we have about 400,000 currently in reserve for the ERP. This will add an additional 500, so bring it to 900,000. So the total cost, Mayor, for that entire project is anywhere in the neighborhood of about two and a half to three, maybe even three and a half million dollars.
That's with our existing vendor?
Well, we would do, we would do an RFP.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to do an RFP. But that, the total cost for backfilling staff that are gonna be required to be spending a good portion of their time on the new ERP, having a project management coordinator, and then just all the costs with implementation, we're looking about two and a half to three and a half million dollars. The good thing that most of these large firms out there, so whether it's Oracle, Tyler, which is what we have right now, and there's a few other companies out there, they're allowing municipalities to fund the difference. So, you know, you have the cash payment and whatever the difference is, they're allowing them to fund it over anywhere from a three to five-year period at a very low cost of interest. So that's, that's an opportunity we'll have to, once we get to that point, you know, do we throw more cash at it, or do we fund it? And just amortize that over, you know, three or five years.
And then, I'm assuming it's a SaaS model, so then there's recurring OpEx on top of that?
Yes.
That we have budgeted for, or no?
No, not, not, not for the out years. No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on new budget requests? Okay. Let's real quick highlight personnel requests. So under Fire, unfreeze Emergency Management Coordinator. And then for Fire Prevention, a new Plan Check Coordinator. So that's pending, and that is a revenue generating position. And as far as new positions, that is it. Under City Clerk, it's mentioned there that budgeted for Assistant City Clerk, and that recruitment, I believe, is still ongoing. Capital project. So there is an Exhibit D that you do have attached to your packet, is a five-year proposed capital improvement program. And I'll get to that in a minute. Let me scroll over a couple of slides here. So the recommendation to build general CIP reserves, establish a general CIP reserve account. So we don't have that right now. We do have specific reserve accounts, like for the plunge reserve, the Rec Park Phase One Reserve, and, and some other reserves. But what I would like to do is establish just a general CIP reserve account that council can then just pull throughout the year if there's something that they want to do. So this budget, and it'll be on a subsequent slide, does propose starting that. Okay, some sample CIP projects that have recently been completed or that will soon be completed are the Grand Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, new sidewalks at the 400 block of West Mariposa, Recreation Park Checkout Building Restrooms, City Hall Restrooms and ADA Improvements, Sewer Flume Replacement, Police Department Chiller Replacement. And I believe that previous chiller, was it from the 80s, Elias?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, very old and inefficient. The new one, it will be much more energy efficient. Civic Center Remodel, Phase One, Concrete Sidewalk Repair, Fire Station 1 and 2 Carpet Replacement, and Sewer Main, Citywide, the CCTV inspections, which are.
Joe, you mind if we take a 10, please?
I'm sorry?
10-minute break?
Absolutely.
Please, if you don't mind. All right, we'll be back. Thank you. All right, we'll be back, thank you.
So continuing with CIP. So these are some pictures of sample proj, sample projects. These are the new sidewalks that were installed at 400 block of West Mariposa, so before and after pictures, and that's three different locations at that intersection. Rec and Park checkout building restrooms, so again, before and after pictures. City Hall restroom ADA improvements, before and after pictures. And if there's any specific questions, Elias would address those. The sewer flume replacement, again, before and after pictures. Police department chiller replacement, again, the before and after. The civic center remodel, phase one. So we have the executive conference room and the plan check counters. Some sample CI projects in design, bidding, or construction phase, so these are ones that have already been approved and have budget already earmarked.
Joe, real quick, back to the plan check area, did we move forward with that carpet in the rest of that, of the department?
I believe that's going to be budgeted in the next year.
I just, I mean.
Yeah, we've done the phase one, the phase two is including that, but most likely is not going to happen because the cost is going to be a lot of money.
For carpet in the.
Well, the other things that we want, it, and we plan to come to city council with, with that, and we're going to let the city council decide.
Okay, sooner, I mean, that, this has been now eight months?
Yes.
So now by the time we get it done, that carpet that was in there is going to be, yeah, like I, I'm not.
We, we, we're going to come to.
I thought we said just move forward with it.
Yes, ma'am, we're going to come to city council shortly with, with, with that project, and we'll have a staff report and we'll follow the direction.
I just wish I could think it would be done over the weekend.
This is really in the weeds Elias, I'm sorry, but can we consider carpet tiles? As an example, the fire department floor wasn't done that long ago, and there's already like a huge stain on that carpet that we saw near Torren, so can we consider carpet tiles where they're just replaceable?
In some areas, we've done that already. Sure, of course, thanks.
So I, I won't go through these, but again, this is a list of projects, CIP projects that council have already earmarked budget towards, that will design, the bidding or construction will start shortly. The proposed 2324 CIP budget for all funds, so we have carryover of 14.9 million dollars and, and that Schedule D, that's in your attached packet, it's, all the projects are listed. So again, we have 14.9 of carryover projects, so council already earmarked those funds. New project requests of 18.7 million, and so total of 33.6 million dollars that will be in 2324. And to focus on the general fund CIP now, so these, on that Schedule D, again, it looks like this, it's five-year forecast, it focuses on project number 21 through 52, and here's a listing of the projects for 2324 that are being proposed, so 7,225,000. Library south wall waterproofing, 125,000, emergency operations center, 107,000, and I was just informed that should be 107,500, so I will adjust that. So an extra 7,500 is our match for the grant. 50,000 for electric vehicle charging stations, 100,000 for HVAC repairs, 150 for fire alarm panels citywide, 50,000 for plumbing citywide, 100,000 for miscellaneous electrical, 750 for main facilities ADA compliance projects, 2.5 million for the plunge rehab, which we already discussed that in a prior slide, 3 million for rec park projects, phase one reserve, again, that was already discussed in the previous slides, so those are the contributions for 2324, 200,000 for Center Street storm drain improvements, and 100,000 for downtown beautification, which includes the lighting and, and some baskets and other beautification initiatives. So any specific questions on any of this or direction that council?
Joe, without having D in front of me, what's the total estimate on the CIP needs overtime?
Mayor, would you like this copy? I have another one here.
And then one of the things we had said, talked about Joe, on, on the CIP, was we really wanted to make sure that we were planning out like 10 to 15 years, so as things come up, that they're, whatever their lifecycle is, is that they're plugged in for future years, so we're not having to get behind, like forward planning of all of our CIP, because I know we did a full CIP assessment, and I just want to make sure that we create, we have, and I'm sure you have it, but where everything is, if we know that. we ha- and I'm sure you have it, but where everything is, if we know that the life cycle is coming to an end, that we're actually just putting it on the bu- on the budget for that year.
And that, that's the point, as I mentioned previously, is creating this CIP reserve account. So we can start dumping money in there. So I'm proposing putting in, I think it's 418,000 this year. And that's for these long-term projects, but we only identify five years of projects here, but the city has done a facility assessment citywide that goes out, it's either 20 or 30 years, what? 20, 20 years.
Joe, wasn't there a big pump project that was supposed to be due this year? Something, just like a $2 million pump.
So that did get pushed out to 2425.
Got it. And which pump is that?
This is pump station number 17, and that's project number 32 on the CIP list.
Okay, so that's no longer this year, that's been pushed out a year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and that's 1.3 million earmarked in 2425.
Joe, okay, so I'm looking at the, it looks like it's about 73 million. At last estimate, I thought it was around 40. I know there's some reserves in here too, but I just added up the prior year carryforward going through 2728, it's like 70, 74 million bucks.
Are you, are you adding the five years plus the carryover?
Yeah, is that not the way to do it, or?
Well, some of these are new, like the Measure W stuff, it comes, that comes out of the property tax.
Yeah, how much is not in the CIP, in the, in the other specific funds? How much is general fund specific?
So general fund starts with.
I'm sorry, I see you.
Project 21 and, and below.
Okay, so.
And then the funding source is listed on, on there, Mayor.
32, 33 million? That's less than what we expected.
For.
I thought last time we did a facility-wide assessment, it was around 40 million bucks in total CIP or something.
Yeah, I think that might be all funds.
I think that would be.
Okay. Okay, well, then it has increased considerably, because I'm looking at 73 million here, and the original number was somewhere around 40, and we assumed over time it was going to escalate to 60.
Right, less, less the enterprise fund. So the water and wastewater were not included in that study, so that needs to be extracted out of this.
Yeah, and like transport, the SB1 funding and things, that, that's not included in our CIP stuff.
It could be.
Or?
Like, some of the roads that were included in, in the assessment study, it, it could be used, the SB1 funds for that.
In that case, we should include those.
Just kidding, just kidding.
So do, do you know what, okay, I, I just am trying to get a sense of, have the capital expenditures increased considerably? We haven't revisited the numbers, have we, since that last assessment was done?
Yeah, I don't believe we have.
And when, when, when was that?
That was before my time.
Four years at least, right?
Five years ago.
Ken Berkman, yeah. It would be good to get a general sense of what the escalators are on that now, current dollars, because I guarantee it's not what we thought it was. We've already seen that with the plunge, in the course of two years, the construction costs have increased considerably, so why not have a real, more realistic assessment, again?
Yeah, and again, this is only looking five years out, where that, that assessment you're referring to is a 20-year outlook. And we, we can do a proposed.
I'm just suggesting whatever we use is to get, revisit those numbers, because those were based on assumptions from five years ago, and those have changed in the market. That's all.
Okay.
Do you put a, a inflationary component to that, so just add like a trigger?
So the, the numbers that are on here are based off of current, current estimates.
So even though we know, like, in five years, the time value of money, like, we don't have like a calculator in there?
We, we, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we are projecting, you know.
Okay.
Those projects in five years, yes.
Well, thanks. Nice and big. Read it. It's also on page 186 of your.
Yeah, so the, the carryovers, again, that's, you know, council's already approved that. That's earmarked reserve for those projects. And then 2324, it's what we're proposing for general fund for this year and, and some of the other funding sources. Water and wastewater, those are routine things that need to be done each year to maintain the system and, and the quality of that infrastructure.
Joe, I know you won't be here, but next year, year after, year after, where are we going to find those funds for CIP? You've got, you've got some reserves set asides for specific projects that we've prioritized. Besides that, where are the funds coming from?
Right.
Assumed increases in revenue, or?
So, well, some of your, the policies that council has passed, the Topgolf revenue policy. So one, that dedicates some funds for, for CIP. Measure BT, that is online, you know, that will be effective. Some of that new revenue can be utilized for, for CIP projects.
Yeah, I just remember those numbers and the assumptions at revenue, and there's still a considerable shortfall. So I don't know, maybe you don't have the answer today, but it just feels like we're going to be continuing to defer these projects unless we find either bond source or additional revenues, revenue sources, or a cut.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, you would need to either do a bond, right, or additional revenue, or enhanced revenue. Sales tax, if we did a quarter, enacted a quarter cent sales tax, that would bring in today about three and a quarter million dollars on a quarter cent sales tax. And that could be earmarked for CIP if it was put as a, as a special tax on the ballot.
So we still have on our books the trigger point.
We, we do, but I truly believe that will never be enacted, because the capacity for LA County to place a new county-wide sales tax on the ballot has severely diminished. We have about 70% of cities in LA County that have already enacted their own local sales tax and have reached that ceiling. So that the capacity for LA County to collect new revenue i- is diminishing, and it's, it's just not there. Unless, again, unless that ceiling, which is at 10 and a quarter, is raised by Sacramento. But I haven't heard any discussion on that.
And then, one of the things, um, I know you put it here, charging station, car charging station. Is there any appetite to look at solar, like, solar power buildings? Is there any grants to be, to be made for solar?
Yeah, I know Elias has looked at that, so I'll let him speak to that.
Definitely, and we are looking at using or utilizing EV stations that include carport, and on top of the carports, there are going to be solar panels that would, in, in part, would generate the energy needed for, for the EV stations. That's, that will, what we would like to install.
And then what would be a fund, your own, just to set up some same area?
Right.
Like, that require a lot of, you know, electrical?
Right, and, and we are looking at facilities that we have with a flat roof, and, and if we could utilize those facilities, you know, that's, that's fine too. But on EV stations, we are, and we're applying for, for grants, by the way. We have applied for a number of grants, and hopefully we'll be able to, to get some grant money.
But most of those grants do require a city match, so you got to have some seed money in, in, in the budget.
Elias, do you want to talk a second about the information you presented at the Environmental Committee regarding the Siemens project, and how we almost had something and then it fell apart?
Sure. So there are companies like Siemens that have approached us, and, and, and since then, there was one or two more offers where, where they can come and they tell us that they are willing to look at our, our buildings and try to add solar panels on, on roofs, and, and be able to also add EV stations, and, and they guarantee that that would reduce the, the energy consumption of the cities. So in one particular case, it costs a lot of money for them to do that. It, it, the one that Siemens did, they had a price tag of, of 1.2 million dollar, which, which was excessive. So we are trying, we're still on, on, on trying to get the best deal that is possible for us. So we're making attempts to try to see if we could make our facilities more energy efficient. And, and, and by that, I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting adding solar panels on top of the roofs, and while we add it, maybe add EV stations and so forth. Yeah.
Thank you. So you know that the city has asked around and gotten bid proposals from companies that will come in and do the solar, and guarantee you're going to save this much money, but it just didn't work out, but it's a continuing process that they're looking into.
Mayor, I wanted to go back and address your question about finding money for the future projects. Another source of funds that we have is the new development impact fees, which council passed last year. We implemented them in September of 2022. Once those are fully implemented, we, we, council decided to phase those in over a three-year period. Once that's fully implemented, that's anticipated to bring in about 2 million a year, and some of that money, some of it can be used for some of these projects, depending on what the restrictions are. Okay, so CIP reserves, I'm not going to belabor this. We already went over these two projects, the plunge reserve and wreck park reserve. General fund reserves, so our current policy states 20 to 25%. I am recommending for 2324, a 25% reserve. An economic uncertainty reserve of $2 million, which is, that, that's what we have right now, so keeping that status quo. We also have some other reserves, our OPEB, Other Public Employee Benefits Reserve, that's for retiree health. We have about $30.1 million in there today, and again, no new funding's required. And that is still anticipated to be fully funded in, in about 10 years or so, and then we can start withdrawing that to pay for retiree healthcare. Other reserves we have are the Workers' Comp Fund. We have about 7.5 million in there. Our total liabilities, however, are about 12 million, so there's, there's a shortage there. We need to keep building that up. General liability reserves, we have just under a million, and then equipment replacement reserves. So a snapshot of where we're anticipating to end this year, so June 30, 2023. So we did finish our financials, and per our audited financials, which can be found on the ACF, page 120, we ended July 1, 2022 at 31,974. So that's our beginning fund balance for '22, '23. Our revenues were estimated, we're going to end at 88.5 million, and expenditures at 87.5. So an ending fund balance at June 30 of just under $33 million. And this is how we're anticipating to allocate that out. So again, starting with the new fiscal year, July 1, '23, that beginning fund balance of just under 33 million, estimated revenues of 88.3 million, proposed appropriations of 88.2 million. That leaves about 33.1 million in reserves. Dedicating 25% reserves will leave 22 million in reserves, and that leaves $11 million for this unassigned fund balance that's at council's discretion. And this is how the budget is recommending to allocate that out. The 7,225 in CIP projects, which we already talked about, and that's before you. 418,000 to put into this general CIP reserve to start that for future projects. And hopefully, we can contribute to that each year and start building it up. Half million dollars for the pension trust. $400,000 transfer to the equipment replacement to pay down that loan, which is 5.5 million dollars right now. And this is in compliance with council's Topgolf revenue policy. And then 2.5 million reserved set aside for costs of new labor agreements. And some of those, we have ideas what those increases will be for us. So this is the recommendation of how to apply that $11 million after the 25% reserve, if council agrees to that 25% reserve.
So I have a question. On the CIP reserve that you're recommending, we, we don't have that today, where we're actually putting money in reserve for capital improvement projects, and you're recommending that we create this new fund, and we annually put money into it on, in, in, on top of the CIP money that we're spending for fiscal year.
Right, so right now, we just have reserves for specific projects.
Right.
But we don't have just a general reserve in the CIP fund for future projects, as the mayor, you know, asks, well, how are we going to pay for these projects down the pipeline?
Right, so one of the things, I know that when Drew and I came on the council, there was a lot of unfunded CIP projects, and we started to really put focus on them and take them, you know, go through them. I know it would be more kind of ceremonial, but could we put a policy, as, or if we had decided to, as, as the five of us on the council, to say, put a stick, like, a, you know, every year, we're going to put X amount into that reserve? And I know, obviously, the future councils can undo that, but if there's an established policy, it's, it's harder for them to undo, because I would hate for us to get back to that situation where we're not funding our capital improvement, because that really should, you know, if you don't, if you don't put your money into your buildings and they crumble, it costs more. If you maintain them over time, they, they cost less. And I just want to put that out there to the council, that if you were going to be open to establishing a policy, obviously, it's more ceremonial, because they can undo it, but at least it's a policy that we establish.
I like that, Carol. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, one, you know, one option, coming back to the slide here. 25% reserve, you know, equates to about 22 million. And I, I, I'm sure you're all aware of, you know, the private sector tends to feel any recessionary pressures first, and then it trickles down to the public sector. And, you know, there, there's signs in the economy that we could be heading to a recession. It's not, no one has a crystal ball, but some of those signs are there. And I know we'd be getting a lot of letters and notices from the private industry in our city that they're doing, you know, these 5 to 10% layoffs, which, those are corrections, so they, they can, you know, stay profitable. You know, with that said, it, it may be good to keep that 25% reserve, just in case we do head into any recessionary times, and then, you know, we, we can get through them. And maybe next time this year, you know, if there is no recession, move some of those funds into that CIP reserve. You know, that's, that's one way that we can start dumping a, a ton of money into those CIP reserves.
So to move forward with something like that, should we put it on an agenda, future agenda? Yes.
I think you can do that, but you can also, as part of the budget adoption, make that, that policy decision. As we bring back future budgets, we look at putting money into this CIP reserve, this separate CIP reserve based upon, you know, the actual, of, of keeping the 25% whole, and then whatever's left over, we put in, or a portion of that into the, the CIP reserve.
Yeah, I mean, you could put 5% aside, and on top of the, whatever the uncertainty reserve is. I think you should, we, budget's on the agenda, we can have that discussion now. So if you want to have that discussion. Also, we know that a couple very important buildings of the city of El Segundo are going back to the bank, because they can't cover their debt loads. So to think that we're not, that, that things are definitely out there, changing, and office vacancy is up considerably on the east side of town from where it was. So that hasn't affected our BLT yet, but I believe it will affect our BLT. So we need to be financially prudent for the next 18 months minimum, I would suggest. I like your idea, Carol.
Yeah, and Mayor, just to the point you just made, before you came, I touched on the BLT for next year, and I was very conservative with that number, factoring in that there would be a reduction in headcount in overall businesses in the city.
So do we need to make a, do we need to?
Yeah, you could make a motion that you want to set aside, for example, 5% of general fund towards capital improvement project reserves, and then the, after the current reserve policy has already been met.
Okay, so can we make that motion, 5%?
I'll second that.
Wait, so, so I understand this would be 5% of any unallocated appropriations? Wait, so I understand this would be 5% of any unallocated appropriations?
No, I was, I said general fund.
5% of the general fund is a lot of money.
Yeah, it's about $4 million bucks.
To CIP?
Yeah, we're doing 2.5 for the next couple of years, so, and we got a long way to go.
But make that a percent policy instead of doing it by project that we do now?
Well, we, my, I think what Carol's getting at is we're just looking at a really heavy lift in terms of projects we have ahead of us, and we have not identified a huge part of that funds. We have a couple revenue sources coming online, but we're still going to have a major shortfall. So just to clarify, did you mean 5% of the general fund? I didn't want to speak for you. You want to clarify that?
Do we have the bandwidth to do 5% of the general fund, or that would be?
So my, my recommendation would be for, let me go back to, oh, here we are. Because there are some recessionary signs to maintain this for, this 25% for general fund, but, you know, are you saying you want to do this starting now, starting July 1st, 2023?
No, I think, you, I think what you're suggesting is for next year, she was talking about having a policy that would guide future councils. They could change if they want to.
Right.
You've already set aside $2.5 million for capital for this next year, correct?
More than that.
What was that?
7.7.
Yeah, so I came up with 8 million, which is 5% of the budget roughly, about the same. And so that's what I was suggesting for future policy consideration.
Yeah, so I think what you're saying is the 5% includes the capital improvement that would be already a purpose. I was, I was, it's the same thing, but it's split. I was just saying, in addition to whatever is approved for that year, you put aside a portion of money.
So you have the 5%, and then some are, some of those funds are allocated to specific projects. The leftover of that 5% gets put into the reserve.
So if you say 5% of your, of your general fund goes to capital improvement, whatever you allocate that year, you allocate, and whatever is left of that 5% goes into the reserve. I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, and at that rate, it's going to take us like 10 years to get to these projects minimum.
Yeah, unless there's a new revenue source.
Yes, and there are increase in expenses to go along with that.
Right.
If we allocate these funds to the capital improvement fund, are they locked up there for only in capital improvements?
Unless council at some point says, I want to pull those back. So, yeah, we can't tie the hands of future councils, but typically, once it's in a reserve, you know, I haven't seen a council take that and remove it.
Right.
Well, it's a double check. It's, I mean, like I said, it's more ceremonial, but it just establishes a procedure, like a protocol.
How did you determine the $418,000 amount?
That was just what was left over.
Okay. I'm going to do a substitute motion because I feel like I need some clarification. It would be that-
Well, let me, let me just make a couple comments. One is, I like the idea of saving away for capital improvements. When I toured the parks department with Ally, like, our park system is in disrepair. It's a little embarrassing. I like the idea of planning ahead, just phase one, it looks like it was some $9 million just for phase one for parks and rec, even though we're getting started on that, that's a multi-year deal. But I also want to remind everyone up here that but for that spike in gas prices and that $4 million in utility tax, we wouldn't be having this $11 million. That was $4 million that kind of fell in our laps. So I'm a little hesitant to start making a percentage allocation of general fund, but I do like the idea of saving for, in a capital reserve fund, to try to meet these obligations of the improvements that we want to make in the future. I just, I'm concerned that this time next year, that $11 million is not going to be there, and we'll have a very difficult conversation.
Let me clarify, because I think where I was headed with my substitute motion would be similar to, there have been years that we have not hit the reserve policy. We haven't had the funds to fund that. It's a guideline. So the guideline is X amount to get, whatever, what is it, 18% typically? What have you been targeting? I know you increased, I know it's 25% now, but-
Yeah, well, when I first started, it was 15%.
15, that's-
Yeah, then we battled over 20 and 22%, and then we got to 25 as largely as a result of the bond rating agency and getting a feel for how they assess bond ratings and what a reserve would be, so that's why we had the 25%.
And there was some GFAO best practices in terms of reserve levels as a percent of general fund. So why don't we just say that the goal is to continue to fund 25% in reserves and then 5%, 5% in capital improvement projects either on this next year or future years, but as a set aside, that's the goal. And if we can't get there, we can't get there, but that's something, I mean, I like-
Yeah, that would be an easier policy to implement.
Okay, that's my motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, I, I like that a lot more.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I had a feeling that was coming.
And then just to put it in perspective, 25% is only three months of operating costs. That's it, three months, it's not a lot.
No, I don't think there's any dispute that we want to keep that reserve number nice at 25%, especially with the unknowns we have coming up next year or so. So thank you for being conservative with that estimation.
So this is the 10-year general fund financial forecast. So it used to look very different before the POBs and TopGolf. And I also have Measure BT in there now as well. So we're looking much healthier as an organization. This still does not include the future CIP. So to the mayor's point, you know, we need to figure out, again, you know, how we're going to start saving for that, and the new policy will definitely help us get there. But this is a much better financial picture than what it used to look like.
Like, I just wanted to make a point, like, I was going down this capital improvement, and we have the Main Street Improvement, I'm just trying to find it now. And I think we have 100, oh, Downtown Beautification, there's $100,000 in it for fiscal '23, '24, but then there's no money for the next four years after that. And we have to be, we have to know that with, in that timeframe, there's going to need, we're going to need money for continuous beautification. So I think, hopefully, this reserve will help us be a little more practical about it because we can't, I can't imagine that we're going to spend $100,000 and then not spend any more money on beautification in downtown for five years.
Yeah, and that leads, you know, to other policy discussions. Should the city be paying for it, or should the businesses? A lot of cities have what's called business improvement districts set up where businesses that directly benefit from that will put in a little bit of money and maintain the landscaping, the medians, the parkways, but that's more of a policy discussion, how that's going to be funded long-term. So Cultural Development Fund, city manager mentioned that first meeting in May, they'll be in front of council proposing their budget. Here we have Debt Service Funds, so we have two of them, the Douglas Street Gap Closure. So this is funded with traffic mitigation fees, no general fund dollars are used. We do have about two years of fund balance in the reserves, so if traffic mitigation fees are enough, they're not collected enough in one year, we can pull from the reserves.
Joe, I have a question that may be answerable by a mix of the city attorney and Elias, and that's, is it possible to make an application for Measure M or Measure R funding to close out those, that bond?
That one might be a tough sell going back and asking-
And we have to go back in history to retrofit a project, but stranger things have happened. I don't know if that's legal, if you can use those funds for a bonded project. And that might be an answer for a different time, that might revolve a little bit of research, but I have to ask this because George Hoops was my neighbor, and he hated this project more than anything.
That's a question for the Council of Government's Transportation Committee Chair, right there.
There were, Elias and I could talk about this, were also, I believe, other grant funds that did go into it at the time. We're scratching back about 20 years here now, and my sense is probably not, but we can, we can certainly ask.
I mean, we've just got a ton of time left on this. I mean, it's the, it is the debt obligation that never goes away. 2035 is ways out, but it's not an astronomical sum of money in terms of how Metro spends.
What is it about currently, about five or six million, Joe?
It's $500,000 a year.
For the, on the Douglas Street? Yeah, the annual payments roughly? No, no, the, no, the total debt. Total debt, yeah, no, it's going to be six, about six million, six and a half million. Okay. The annual interest rate on that is, I believe, two and a half, right around there, 2.4.
Just a thought, if, and that might be for a discussion at a later date, but that would be, even though the money is very cheap on it, it would be, if we could retire it on somebody else's dime, that would be nice.
Okay, and then the, the other bonds, which were issued two years ago, pension obligation bonds, so annual payment of 9.7 million, and the final payment there is June 2040. And this is a big part of what's providing, you know, the, to your point, you know, the $11 million that we have, that council's discussing how to utilize, is these pension obligation bonds, which is saving us, I think, 84, 85 million, you know, over, over the life of the bonds, it's significant. These are the proposed budgets for some of the special revenue funds, pretty much status, status quo. Water and wastewater funds. So I will make a point here, the drought prior to all the rains that we had, businesses and residents really cut down on their water use, which is a good thing, but that did have a negative impact, you know, on our projected revenues. So I know on the water, we still have two, 3% increases that are supposed to happen January 1st of '24 and then January 1st of '25. That really needs to stay in place in order to ensure that that fund is healthy moving forward long-term, and we are able to continue with all the capital projects that are required each year to maintain that system. Wastewater fund, that, that balance is starting to get healthy after, so we've had three increases already implemented, and there's two remaining, both at 9%. So that's January 1st, '24 and January 1st, '25. And again, we have that balance, that hyperion refunded to us that, you know, I would recommend that we bring back at another council meeting, discuss legal parameters on how, what we can do with that. Any questions on the water or wastewater funds?
And then real quick on the water, the water fund, you know, I know that the state of California is in legal battle with, with, over the Colorado River, and that's at an impasse at the moment, and there's some anticipation that it could get a little bit ugly. So that, that charge could go up over time, I mean?
Well, so we purchase 100% of our water from West Basin. West Basin purchases, purchases their water from Metropolitan Water District, right? So they get their water from either State Water Project or Colorado River. Yes, that is correct. There is some, you know, long-term battles taking place with that.
I mean, I was just on a call today with the government affairs, and it has not, they have not resolved anything, and it's, it's getting, everyone's at a kind of a, put their heels in the ground a little bit, so.
And while we did have, you know, plentiful rain and snowpack this summer, we, we got to be smart and anticipate that will be future droughts, and how will that impact water security, you know, for El Segundo businesses and residents? So something, yeah, definitely long-term, but as far as our rate increases, we only have two more left, and they can't be more than 3%. So even if West Basin increases our rates, we anticipated that they would increase our rates by 5%. So if they did something greater than that, we still would not be able to pass that on. Alls we can do is 3%. And then another Prop 218 study would need to be done in about two years. Okay, proposed budget for the '23, '24 Internal Service Funds, we have the Equipment Replacement Fund, and something that we're taking a different approach this year is fully budgeting all the funds that are available. So we have $16 million available in equipment replacement and just budgeting that. General liability, it's pretty much the status quo, so it's in line with the '22, '23 budget. Our anticipated claims have started to level off in our insurance. This is something I think would be, you know, good for everyone to know, but cities with full service, so police and fire statewide, most of those cities are seeing their insurance premiums increase 10 to 12%. I just went to an ICRMA board meeting last Thursday, ours is only increasing 5 to 6% for, for next year. So that's very good for our risk pool. So much, much lower than most of the average risk pools across California. And then workers' comp, those premiums are increasing about 10%, and that's reflected in the budget. And then we kept the claims elevated to the same level they were in the '22, '23 budget. I already touched on the risk programs, I talked about the fees going up. So proposed next steps for '23, '24, citywide fee resolution, so something that I implemented a few years ago, and we've been bringing to council every year, increasing fees, and we have our master fee schedule by the December annual CPI of 7.45%. So that's coming before you tomorrow night, and that's, just reflects the cost that's being incurred upon the city. Development impact fees, so I did touch on that previously, but phase two implementation going to 75% of what we should be charging will be implemented September 1st, '23, and then phase three implementation, 100% on September 1st, 2024. That's anticipated to bring in anywhere from 2 to 2.5 million a year once that's fully implemented. Fiscal year '23, '24 budget, public caring and adoption, June 6th, that's our anticipated date. And then beginning of the new fiscal year, July 1st. And that concludes my almost three-hour presentation. I apologize it took so long.
Just wait for June 6th.
Does council have any questions or any other follow-up? I was anticipating putting a budget study session two on the May 2nd council meeting, just something real short, part of just the normal council agenda, if there's any follow-up that's needed.
I don't know, is there? I think we made a couple of decisions, at least one, tonight. Is there, is there any colleagues, is there any reason to bring it back, or Daryl?
No, I mean, unless there's anything significant that staff has to follow up on, as what Joe presented tonight, we should be okay, but if there's any, any major topics or department items or components of the budget study session you think we need, you'd like additional details on, we may need a little time, but otherwise, we're, we'll take questions now.
Yeah, I just, I think I'm probably going to handle it here. I just want some, just some clarification. When it come to the fire budget, there was a few things that kind of got added in, so I know that, I guess I believe what I'm looking for is the O and M different from what, is that lower, a lower percentage of the budget right now, and then the increases come from the new position plus the percentage of the, I'm drawing a blank on the name of it, but the-
Coordinators.
Services, yes.
Coordinators, so that's back in the budget, that's 352,000.
Right, so that's why that budget is a little bit higher than it was previously. It wasn't necessarily with O and M, it's because of that?
Right, so if I go back to that slide real quick. I'm sorry.
I think it was 31, maybe? Slide 31? No, or whatever.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're only seeing a 1% increase, which is, I mean, that's very good.
It's very good, that's what I want to understand, because I know one of the things, obviously, you know, a couple of years ago, we had asked for is a recurring savings. So-
Yes.
It seems to me, just from your numbers, that there was a savings, and then because of the things we've added on to, now it's just a little bit over what the, you know, appropriation was. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
So without those new appropriations, it would have been half a million less? So without those new appropriations, it would have been half a million less? I'm just counting, it was three hundred and fifty thousand for the...
Yeah, maybe somewhere around four to five hundred thousand less.
Okay, so there's been about a five hundred thousand dollar savings?
Yes.
That's come up?
Correct.
So the, there was an issue though with overtime where the savings that we expected weren't being realized. Is, are we expecting that going forward, that that will be realized? Is that what's in the budget for next year?
So we don't have any frozen positions, and it's anticipated that the vacant positions will be filled, which would reduce the overtime.
Daryl, anything to add on that?
No, that's, that's correct.
And then, Mayor, you know, one other thing is, you know, all these new positions that are being filled, they're being filled with Pepper members, which are significantly less than the classic members.
Or anything else?
I just want to say, Joe, you know, going over this budget with you and over the last few years, you've done an amazing job of really, you know, it's so nice to see a budget that's true. I know when we first started, I used to call it fuzzy council math.
Fuzzy math, yeah.
But you're, you know, a budget is supposed to be the truth, and you've done a great job of presenting the truth and so that we really know where we're going and give us a good guideline. So I just want to thank you for your efforts and all you've done for the city. It's very, it's very, it's rewarding to see, you know...
Thank you, appreciate that.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we're going to miss you, Joe. You'll come back in a few years.
Everyone in Joe's department's come back, right?
Yes.
That's what I learned on my tour. People love it so much, they can't stay away from Joe and his department.
Yes.
But to echo what Councilmember Perstek said, I thank you so much for your time and service to our city. Even before I was on council, I found that you were very transparent, very open, and I just appreciate the hard work and effort you put in to make sure that we are physically, fiscally responsible. And that's how we get our good bond ratings, we're able to have all the services we do because we plan ahead and we're able to rely on you and your staff that work so hard. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, and I couldn't do it without my wonderful staff.
Yeah, finance department, great job.
They're the ones, you know, doing the daily work.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to miss you. All right, Mayor Perstek, anything else? Good? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.